This building or what?
And that was just, that's probably a very old estimate that doesn't consider the inflation as well.
So that you, in this same document, you've got information coming from a variety of timeframes?
Well, just in the last several, several months, the cost of construction and materials has increased, so we might see an increase there.
No, I understand that, but that produces a document that's confusing.
Just, yeah, just an estimate at the time that we entered the item.
Yeah, at least you have the dates on here so that we can tie it to.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, the price is going to go up.
I anticipate that, yes.
Okay, Mr. Canales, keep going.
These are the, the specific projects that were just mentioned on this previous slide, the air handler number seven replacement. So you see the program and how things come to play. A lot of times, people don't often realize the work that goes on behind the scenes and coming in after hours and on the weekends and helicopter, you know, delivering the materials. So this is just a visual of that. Yep. There's the roof that we were just talking about at Medlock.
Yeah.
Finished product. Temperature and cool, I'm sorry.
You would, this is an estimate and you would bid it out and it would be what it would be, right?
Correct.
Yeah, but I.
Very fluid, the, the, you know, projections are still very fluid from this point.
Yeah, I know, I was telling Commissioner Price, um, in a house that I had that, the roof's not that big. The insurance company, after we had to go arbitrate with them because they wouldn't pay at first, when the big storms came through, that's like a hundred thousand dollars now, and that was like thirty thousand dollars five or six years ago. It's crazy.
No, no, I, I understand, but, but we're like trying to get some perceptive in a, in a, and I just picked up on the seven hundred and fifty thousand here. Of course, that's, that's a whole another story. This, this roof had been, I thought was replaced for two years ago, but that's something different. That's another, another story. But then Medlock, as I said, I didn't think was that down, and I'm looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars different. That was the only reason I query. I think i- i- if we're gonna do estimates, and I'm sure they're using something to do that. I mean, let's at least air on the, on the high side so that we don't get, so that we don't get, uh, get, you know, get slugged.
Commissioner Price, if I could clarify, so when they put administration building there, they're talking about the former administration building and four eleven Elm Street.
Oh, okay, okay.
That, that might make a little bit more.
Yeah, it makes a lot of difference, because I was.
However, that is an aged, uh, an aged number. That, that was a cost estimate from at least three, two, three years ago.
Okay.
So that has definitely gone up.
That's.
And we're obviously, that, that, that's on hold right now.
Okay, right.
Ask this question, and this is one of the things I was, uh, uh, curious about when I was looking at three twenty yesterday, the, the inside of, uh, you, uh, Youth Village? Uh, I love our contractors, but, you know, obviously, if we, if we go with a deal where we just pick one of the five or six contractors for that area and say, congratulations, please give us a price for this, that's gonna be higher than if we go to a process where roofers bid on the roof. As we're talking about this on these things, are we contemplating bids or just?
IDIQ? That, we wouldn't do IDIQ.
You do IDIQ for your design services piece.
Design.
For, uh, for some of your capital replacement, you have a JOC program too, which is a number of small businesses that are part of that program. And then some are bid out, Judge.
Yeah, what, what I'm thinking is, uh, our IDIQ folks could certainly bid on this roof and many other things. But if we go out to bid on them, then the prices, even from our IDIQ contractors, are going to be lower because just common sense, if we know that we have competition, we're gonna put a pencil to it and try to win the bid. If we know it's been gifted to us, then we're gonna, you know, not work as hard to get low. So can we look, as we're doing this, so we can stretch our dollars to doing more bid? With our, you know, not excluding our IDIQs, they're great, but just trying to get better prices on things.
A- and Judge, actually, I think you brought this up a few years back, so within your, your JOC program, you, they are subject to the market rate, so there's an RS means, um, application to that. So they're, they're priced to the market. Um, there is also competition between the JOCs. Um, the quality of work that you're gonna get is much, much higher in a JOC contract versus a, a, you know, a low bid type situation.
I'm not talking about low bid, I'm talking about best bid, okay?
Well, but, but unfortunately, Judge, I know you keep going, trying to go down that road, that unfortunately, unless like yesterday with Mr. Ames, yeah, and on performance, that low bid, uh, Mr. Frost is going probably, I mean, that best bid maybe have to be the lowest bid.
That's right, and that's exactly, exactly. And but what I'm saying is, I want minority businesses to, to be involved.
It's not about minority.
Well, on the JOC program I'm talking about.
None of them are.
It's still not minority.
Yeah, that's your top small business program that we have, Judge.
Okay.
But I, I would say that we, I really do think we.
Small business, I want small business to be involved, but I'd also like to see more competitive pricing. I'm not saying our pricing's too high, I'm saying if you tell me as a construction company, no need to bid on this, just give me your number, whatever you, you think is fair, and I'll pay it, that's a different price than if you say, let me get bids from, like anybody in business would do, let me get bids from three people that do this kind of work. Three very reputable firms that do this kind of work.
But that's not the way, Mr. Frost, uh, and I, I understand your concern.
Take months and months to be able to do that.
But we're talking.
And that's why we have the JOC, so they already compete among themselves and we choose the best price with the small business.
But we're talking about projects that aren't immediate, they're like, let's look at what projects we, we might wanna do next year. So if we know we wanna replace a roof, for instance, next year, would it be possible, we might do as an experiment, get three bids from people that do roofs and get a, you know, after you get the price from whoever is awarded under this, pick our, our, the five or six that we like and just give them work and see which is, is better.
I wouldn't characterize it as pick and see who we like, if the job order contract, as Mr. Bazan stated, we have specified RS means, um, ratios and percentages that are there in the market for the, for the Dallas-Fort Worth market, right? So they're, we're picking and choosing people that are, are quality vendors, that went through a process to be selected through this, through the process. And we bring those forward for expediency somewhat, because as we know, market changes every day. So there's a balance between going out, doing a, a straight low bid based on the qualifications and specifications, which we do a lot, quite frankly, for large projects to some of the smaller projects where we use the job order contract or the IDIQ. So we do balance those out, working with a facilities team and public works.
Yeah, and when I say like, I don't mean anything about, anything negative. I don't mean like, this, this guy goes to church with me, so I wanna get him some work. What I'm saying is, we have faith in this company, and so we choose them to be in our JOC program. No problem with that, right? I, I understand that, I have no problem with that. But I'm saying on some of these bigger projects, maybe it's, you know, I don't know what it is, some dollar amount or more that is lower than building a whole new building, we actually look at.
Well, typically, we're not taking projects other, exceeding two million dollars out to the job order contract, so we do go out for items that are around two million and above. Under that, we get a look at those on the case. We had one for two point something yesterday, I understand, but typically, it's, it's in the two million dollar range. Um, because we, we understand there is a balance here, but what I wanna, I wanna remind the court is that we did go through a competitive process to select the JOC vendors, to get the most qualified vendors, excuse me, in the market, to balance out all the needs of Dallas County, and expediency is, is part of the needs that we have as well, because prices do go up every day. But we understand your concern, Judge, and we look at that as a group on a, on a, on a individual basis. And sometimes we get multiple JOCs to get quotes as well. So it's not like we move forward with one, one JOC quote. I know they look at different JOCs depending on what the size of the project is.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not disparaging any of our JOCs, the way we got our JOCs or our IDIQ. I'm just making the point that if I know, I'm, when you call me, I'm gonna get your work, then there's no need for me to put a, a pencil to it in the same way that I would if it's between me and Jonathan and Dana. And if I want the work, I better beat Jonathan and Dana with a, not the low bid, but the best bid. It's, it's a, yeah, that's one of the reasons I looked at the thing yesterday, is it seemed like, you know, and I love that company, but it seemed like maybe it was a, on the tad on the high side, and it was above two million dollars. Ultimately, I decided, well, if it is a tad on the high side, it's not tremendously so. But I'm just thinking we could stretch our dollars more if we had a little bit more competitive bid process on the larger CapEx projects. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Okay. Pardon me.
Okay, and this one is the humanification project at Swift's that was replaced in this previous year.
Yeah.
And I believe that's the last one on that one.
Now, see, with, with something like Swift's, I just wanna make sure here, it's in about, Swift's ain't about price. Swift's about the ability to perform, correct? We, we had lesson learned over a couple of cycles. So, you know, apparently, with whatever system we deployed over there, everybody can't work on it. You know, you can't get the, you know, that, the window unit air conditioner down the street to come in and repair it. And so we've le, we've learned a lesson and we've paid for that lesson. So here, we're talking about someone who meets the, you know, the quali, qualifications.
Can we go back to that last slide?
That, that was Swift's.
That's a completed project, right?
Correct.
So why is it included here?
We, we were just showing the CapEx program at the end of our slide.
Right.
Just in motion, just some of the things that we do.
Thank you.
So just for clarification, for FY twenty-six budget, total budget requested is?
Uh, including, so CapEx repairs, replacements with IDIQ, it's a grand total of eighty point three million.
Yeah.
So eighty point three, is, is that included unfunded projects that you and I, you guys, so that, so which ones were unfunded? I guess I wanted to see that list too.
So are we talking about major capital development from last week?
Yeah, so that's a different list.
Saying, don't spend it.
Right, so major, do we wanna go over that as part of it?
So, yeah, Mr. Martin wanted to see the slide for, do you have a slide for unfunded projects?
We have, do you, do you wanna pull up the sheet that we did last week?
We have it.
I actually do.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, I meet with facilities bi-weekly, and so I wanna make sure that you got, understand the full scope of what they're requesting. Um, so capital, CapEx is eighty million, correct? And then tell me the difference between non-planned and unfunded projects.
Okay, so it, this is kind of a carryover from last week. We met with Mr. Martin and Dr. Watkins on unfunded major capital development projects, which includes those projects that are, we were just talking about, uh, going back to what County Judge mentioned, those large construction budgets that in no way could come in and be a part of our CapEx budget, because they would wipe, I could possibly have one project wipe out my entire, entire CapEx budget.
So then you have two simultaneous budgets. One is more of a long-term with those higher-priced projects. And then there's, there's a second one with the smaller annual types of.
The, the larger budget, it would be out of my control, that's something that we typically guide, we look at guidance from Budget Office on how that's determined. Most of those large construction budgets, you see a certificate of obligations under bonds, because it's huge projects. Um, those typically don't come from our CapEx budget.
Okay.
No, they come from bond, that's, that's.
Right, because they're a longer term, larger project. And what we're looking at right now are the annual, what's gonna go on on the twenty twenty-six budget, is that correct?
Correct, so my, my concern today was to bring about our, just our typical CapEx twenty-six budget, which is repairs, replacements and IDIQs. That was a part of the eighty point three million on the large end.
On the eighty point three million, um, what portion of that roughly would be things that are, um, you know, greater than a half million dollars or a million dollars?
You're looking at, uh, generator replacements, boiler replacements, roofing, um, HVAC units?
No, I, I got, uh, maybe I didn't ask my question right. So we have eighty as the total. And some of that might be, we need to redo the bathroom in someplace, right?
Correct.
Um, but of the eighty, how much of it, let's just use a million dollars as easy, how much of that would be above a million dollars? So is, is fifty, most of it, right?
Uh, most of that.
Most of it.
Most of it, yeah, most of it.
And the point that I'm making, and this is no, uh, I'm, I'm not critical of any department here when I say this. If we were, let's say it's fifty million, and let's say that by people putting a little bit of a sharper pencil to it and having, and not knowing they're gonna get the work, so they better, you know, not that they're cheating us, but that when you put that sharper pencil to it, you come up with a different answer. If that saves us five percent, that's two and a half million dollars.
But Judge, the, the, the thing with, if, when you look at, and that's one of the things, again, we asked them to publish. When you look at that, and again, we got into the water pumps that I, we had an issue with just two, three weeks ago, and I asked them to go and, and look at. Well, but now we know with those fourteen water pumps, it's a million and a half dollars, just pumps. And I mean, and that controls all of the air in a, in a small city that runs twenty-four seven, which may be, may have been there for twenty-five years. I was down there with them and.
More than that, Commissioner, the infrastructure at Gabe Allen isn't, we, we weren't even born, Judge.
But see, but, but see, that's what I'm saying, a lot of those, uh, they're in that eighty, you know, million dollar. So when you talk about chillers, when you talk about, um, pumps.
Pumps, when you talk about, eh, you know, eh, infrastructure with water, those things happen, Judge. I mean, trying to save here is not the right place to cut or save.
I'm not, I'm not trying to cut anything.
Well, it sounds like it.
If the generator breaks and we need a new generator, and we don't have time to do anything but go get a new generator.
That's right, and we see that on the agenda all the time.
Then we use our JOC or IDIQ. If we know that we're going to do a project that's gonna cost two million dollars in nine months, my question is, could we not get a, uh, a little bit of a bid going so that we could perhaps save some money? Because I know it works that way in all fields, right? If, if a law firm or a, uh, whatever, a cleaning service knows they're your sole source on this, then they, they just don't go to, to the extent of looking at how to give you the very best deal. But if they know they're going against two others, then they will.
And we do, Judge, that's exactly what we do.
I believe I understand your question a little bit more clearly.
Yeah.
And, and in just a second, we'll be able to pull up our Excel spreadsheet or FY twenty-six projections. And what we do is go through each item that's prioritized, and we'll identify, initially identify, is this going to be a JOC? You know, proposal, is this gonna be a sole source proposal, is this a cooperative contract? And then you'll also see the solicitations that we put out that would get us the pricing that you're, I think, looking for.
And the only thing that should be sole source are things like, uh, things in the jail that the only maker of this lock for this door is, you know, ABC.
Those cabinets, those, yeah, there's some things that are just naturally one vendor, but overall, we always compete among all the JOCs and all the programs.
Well, going back and not to beat a dead horse, but looking back at yesterday's at twenty, was there any kind of a com- competition for that two point three million dollars?
Yeah, yeah, the.
Which one, which one was that?
This was the fixing up of the inside of, uh, uh, Youth Village. We'd already built the, the building and put the AC in, but now this is fencing and rooms.
It's, it's, well, it's not, everybody keeps talking to Youth Village, that, that's the sheriff's, uh, that was the sheriff's piece, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that was the sheriff's.
With that one, just to help me understand, so, uh, you know, a, a contractor got two point three million on that. What bid, what, um, you know, competition was in place to ensure that that was, you know, the best bid of even our JOCs or our IDIQs, or was it just that person's turn?
No, I think you're talking about.
Mr. Frost, maybe you know.
Yeah, I think he's, he, he's speaking of the, uh, the sheriffs.
The fencing.
The sheriffs, the sheriff's Ramtech.
Yeah, Ramtech, I mean, now.
And, and Youth Village.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we calling that the Youth Village campus, but keep in mind, this, this is a project, now, you know.
I'm not, I'm not equipping with the project, I'm just asking, what was the, the mechanism of awarding that two point three million within the program?
Well, the, the thing is, first of all, remember, everybody, I think, except, I mean, I think I may have voted this time for, but I don't, that Ramtech building is one that comes already pretty much built in. So now you're talking about, uh, finish out.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Three million for a finish out, so what, again, I'm not, I'm, uh, I'm just curious, what did we do on the bid part of that?
And Judge, I can work with staff and we can, uh, get you exactly the process that was used. I can say that generally, um, you try to have equalization amongst the different JOC vendors, so you have ten to twelve vendors. Some of them are very specialty, like they are, they're only focusing on roofs. Some of them, like the one you saw yesterday, are more, uh, you know, your general contractor, um, capable of fulfilling, you know, thirty thousand worth of building for law enforcement.
Question, were, were two contractors looked at, was anything done other than saying, we like to be equal, so now it's your turn? Mr. Frost, do you know?
I, I'm not aware of the specifics on this particular project, because that's managed inside facilities. Once we award the job order contract, they have the ability to utilize them based on their needs and demands inside the organization. So they have specialization inside their expertise that they would look at these contractors, so they'd have more details, as Mr. Bazan stated.
So, and I'm not critical of you on this, Jonathan, I'm just asking, was anything done other than giving it to this one person where two or three looked at, or anything like that?
Judge, let me work with the department, I don't, I'm not sure I have all the answers you're looking for right now, but I can say that.
I'm asking a very global question.
If you look at your JOCs, say you have twelve JOCs, and I'm, I'm thinking of three or four right off the bat, who could actually fulfill that? And so those are some of your larger contractors in Dallas. They're on the list, um, I can see facilities approaching them. Uh, can you do this, you know, what, what are your costs, et cetera? So there's conversation amongst the different JOC vendors. There's, that said, there's only maybe about four on the JOC list that I think could probably fulfill that.
Well, and, and it's a real simple question, in this instance, did we talk to one or two?
I, I, I don't have that information, but I, but I'll, I can get that for you, Judge.
Well, and, and in this industry, in this area we call Dallas, it, it's, it's also about bandwidth and time. And that's the reason I queried the program yesterday, well, no, no, I want you to look, the reason I queried the program yesterday is because when they moved over to CapEx, prior to that, it was, they were asking me to defer in Roden Bridge three to do, do the finish out. So it's always been hovering at the two, two million, two point three, because I think, uh, you know, I, well, I know, we talked about it. And so it's, it's, it's always been there, it, that hasn't changed in the last, and Ramtech finished, hell, a year ago, eight months ago.
Right.
Yeah, so, I, I, all, and I, I, I know where you're going with that, but it's always been the two point three million, because they were wanting me to talk about deferring some of my project, and so.
And that's very, very rare, I mean, I.
I, I know, I know.
I would say one point five is, is probably.
Okay, this kinda leads to another question, because in general, you have to have some kind of process by which Dallas County functions on, on responding to bids, is that right?
Th- th- that's right, and I would say that facilities has presented this process to their committee many, many times. Um, too, I'm just, I don't have that specific knowledge, I'll have to work with staff, Judge.
Just, please get it for me.
Will do.
Uh, Mr. Rosal, what the judge, I believe, is looking for is when we select a job for any specific, uh, uh, project, we contact the top three and they discuss the price. The judge wants to be sure that we always use the, the vendor that has the lowest price.
No, no, the best.
On the best, okay, the best price, uh, for the project. And that there's communication among the vendors for that.
No, I don't want, that, that's the opposite of a bid, right?
Okay, exactly, that's what I was going to.
So if, if you say to me, Clay, um, I want you to do some legal work for me, how much would you charge me an hour? And go talk to your two competitors and y'all come up with a price that seems fair, that is the opposite of a bid. What, what I would want is for them to say, Clay, what can you charge me? Lawyer two, what can you charge me? And what can you do, and not lowest, but best? Because if we're all colluding together and all talking about our stuff, we're not gonna get the sharpened pencil and the best deal. We're gonna get the best deal for our contractors and hopefully a fair deal for us. What we want is the best deal for the taxpayers and a fair deal for our contractors where they're well-paid. So when people know that there's competition, when Azteca knows that Russell may get the business, Azteca and Russell both sharpen their pencil and give us their best offer, right? That's what I'm saying. Okay.
I understand.
They, I think so too, Judge, and, and we're doing it already.
Okay, well, please, it doesn't sound like it, so please get me the info. And, and I'm not, I think you're doing a great job, but on this instance, it doesn't sound like it, so I wanna see it.
So here's the list.
Sounds like you did a great job, it doesn't sound like that we had the two, you see what I'm saying? I'm not saying you did a bad job, I'm saying it doesn't sound like that, because memory would probably jump out if we did, that we went to two or three people and asked them to give us bids.
It just didn't sound like it.
Dr. Watkins?
Okay, so this is a list that we kinda wanted to make sure you guys were aware of, because they may come up during twenty-six, correct? Request at some point?
Yes.
Well, yeah, because the fire station.
So yes, this is important.
Well, fire station is, is in queue. Yeah, that, that's already in queue, and we're holding on the fire station for some, uh, some closure, yeah, fire station.
Yeah, I mean, we've been working on this for a while.
I think one of the things, Dr. Watkins, and we met on this last week, or the early in this week, I forget. But one of the things, we, we don't have eighty million dollars in the budget. Every year for CapEx, we're averaging anywhere from thirty to thirty-five million dollars. And that's why I asked them to list out the high priority items. The high priority items are at forty-two and a half.
Forty-two million.
Yeah, I thought it was a little bit less than that, but it looks like something got added. It's about forty-two and a half million. There are still some projects on this list that are, as you said, are in key and are ready to go. Um, and we are still looking at the budget, we're not sure if the money is there in the budget to fund some of those. So we may be looking at a twenty, twenty-six bond that I'd like to introduce to you guys at some point. And as we talked about that earlier, we put it on hold, but we maybe, may need to look at that going into twenty twenty-six to cover some of these costs.
If we did a small bond in twenty twenty-six, well, none of us know the answer to this. So we would need to get somebody to advise us, we're gonna have a really big item in the jail, right? And everything we do, we wanna make sure that it leaves us in a position to where we can get our best deal on money.
Absolutely.
To borrow for that. So I, I don't know the answer to this, one, a question I would have, just like a consumer deal, if you take out a little credit card here and a little credit card there, does that help or hurt you with your big purchase? You're gonna buy a house next year.
Right.
We need to get somebody to look at that.
Well, I, Ms. Foster Allen, and, and, uh, ha- have you had a chance to, haven't you been kinda going down that, that road? Because I, I know we've got something looming on this court that we still haven't made a decision about. And, uh, we've got, you know, two dollars, as Johnny, as Johnny Taylor would say, they ain't our last two dollars, but we got two dollars hanging out there. And we gotta figure out what we gonna do with that. And I don't know when that's gonna come before the court, but we need to, we need to, uh, I don't see Ms. Madrono, but we need to deal with that relatively fast in a hurry.
He, he's talking about the, uh, reef, the potential.
Yeah, but you know.
We've had meetings on that, and so I'll bring that up to my priority list, um, and make sure that I focus on that, um, process and project. Um, there's a lot of different, um, ideas that we are tossing around, looking at restructuring it or just, you know, there's some things that occurred because we did not approve it in July with the tax rate. Um, so we're working through that, um, we've had meetings, so.
Great.
Okay, yeah, but, but, but the question, yeah, on the, on the table, there's still looming, based on, is that part of the consideration that Mr. Martin was talking about? Okay, got it, okay, that's, that's, okay.
Okay.
Just wanted, wanted to know that you got it. Okay, so there's the fire station, Judge, we was talking about, see, I know it's in the queue, but.
There is, yeah.
Yeah, but we, we, we're, we're, we're in a hole pattern.
And we need that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's been a priority for quite some time. Okay, Mr. Martin, anything else? It's been a priority for quite some time. Okay, Mr. Martin, anything else?
Thank you.
Doctor? Sounds good.
Thank you, Ms. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Ken, and Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Foster Allen. And, and, and thank you to, to staff. I mean, you know, I, you, you labor and like Mr. Cherry said, you know, it.
It's a constant, it's a twenty-four seven, it never ends. When it's not one thing, it's another thing, and you know.
It's an imperative that our employees, that folks, you know, it's something that approached this court yesterday that we all kind of talked about, but, you know, when that unit went down, it was good, Mr. Gray, Mr. Cherry, uh, hell, like I said, I was over there running the HVAC. I wanted employees to understand. They over there suffering, it was hot, we were opening jail cells, we were doing whatever was necessary. And that's just an imperative that they understand that we care, you know, something about what's going on with them. And I, I just wanna say, you know, thank you. I, I know I was tongue in cheek yesterday about George Allen and some of those civil courts.
But the same thing, I mean, same thing, thank you, staff, because I know that you call us, you know, when the water break, I mean, we have to let jurors know, we have to let judges know. We have, a- and nevertheless, our staff is there, Commissioner. You know, I mean, cleaning water, you know, taking care of things. Five o'clock in the morning. So can I finish? Uh, I mean, we appreciate what, what you all do, and I think that the Facilities Committee, Commissioner Price, Commissioner Daniels, Commissioner Sonnen, the judge, really care about this, and we appreciate Dr. Watkins and our new CFO, Mr. Bosan and administration, for always working together, meeting every two weeks, being sure that all of you are on the same pipeline. When you come to Commissioner's Court, everything, you know, have been vetted more than once, but by more than three or four people and at least three commissioners, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, but I was driving home that, you know, I appreciate y'all in priority, cause hell, if they ain't there taking care of cases, I don't give a damn if they flood. My point is, my point is, is that everybody over there was working, they were there. It was hot as hell, but they saw staff there, they saw, they saw people concerned about them for hours. I mean. And so, you know, and, and as I said, I've been a little tongue in cheek, I mean, I know they had to take care of that, but, you know, hell, they need to take care of their cake. Priority.
Yeah. How to take care of business, and that's what staff does.
Priority.
And I appreciate that immensely.
Priority.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, emergencies come up and you better believe they jump to the.
Priority. Hell, if they ain't coming to work yet, it doesn't matter if, if it floods over, thank y'all. Thank y'all, thank y'all, I'm gonna leave it alone. I'm trying, I'm, I'm trying to.
I, I'm gonna leave it there.
I went to Bible study, I'm trying to contain myself best I can. Thank y'all.
And we have here the chilling therapy dogs, but, uh, with that being said, I mean, there was public affected there too, Commissioner. And, and those are people that have nothing, but, you know, they're the people we serve. So, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, God, you went to Bible study. With that, uh, we keep moving on.
Thank you all for the support. Those are all the items on our agenda today.
No, we have another.
Public Works.
So come on up, Public Works, Ms. Blair and her staff. And I think Ms. Blair shared her information with you guys. Did you?
She did.
Yeah, uh, it was a letter you sent to?
Yeah.
It was a letter she sent out to you guys, and, okay, and so.
It's on the same one. It's the same slide, just go on, continue. When was the letter sent out?
We have a copy of it for you.
Oh, that'd be wonderful, thank you. I've read a few things since Monday evening.
Is this what this is, or something different? Oh, okay.
Thanks. I'm sorry. Oh, you didn't send it to me?
We did.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you very much.
I think I've already got that, I'm looking at it now, yeah, thank you. You can give that to another person. There's no revisions of this from the one I've already got, right? Okay.
Yeah, they, they got, got it in file, but, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Public Works, y'all on deck.
Alrighty, okay.
All right, thank you so much, uh, and we're kind of gonna go over a little bit of, of an overview of twenty twenty-five, but also, um, uh, as you well know, I'm meeting with each and every one of you on specifics on your projects. I think I've already met with a few of you already. I know Judge, we're scheduled, I'm gonna meet with you and Commissioner Summerman. Uh, so we're getting those scheduled, but, um, I, the detailed information, we've already kind of given you a good overview of what's happening and what's going on with your particular projects. So, let's go to the next slide.
And that's, that's the slide deck.
Yeah, uh, go back. So I'm just kind of touch on the, uh, key results and the highlights from twenty twenty-five. Uh, these are our, uh, five areas that we pinpointed in twenty twenty-five that we were gonna focus on. Partnering, as you well know, anything we do, we have to work with our cities, work with COG, TxDOT, and all the different agencies, of course. Project delivery, that's what we're gonna talk about, it's more about the projects. Uh, and then professional development, uh, all the things that we're doing with SAM ME, with the Society of Military Engineers, with infrastructure forums and so forth. And then our program management, and that's managing the federal projects and RT, RTR funded projects, uh, our trail projects and so forth, uh, and the federal projects, and then, of course, our practices, which, uh, we're on our way to getting reaccredited for APWA, uh, and that's part of what we've been doing uh, in, for twenty twenty-five. So go to the next slide. So a quick overview, here's a quick overview of county-led projects, uh, uh, projects that have been underway for twenty twenty-five, and then, of course, our planning and our studies that we've completed, we've done a lot of studies this past year. Uh, so, uh, we've completed, uh, majority of our studies, uh, that we've been working on, and of course, uh, go to the next slide. You'll see here our construction, uh, AARP-wise, we have, actually, Site Path had ARP funds as well. So, uh, those two are now done, uh, so we are tech, checking off the ARP slide, uh, side of the, uh, checkpoints, and then, of course, uh, we had emergency with the, uh, Malloy Bridge, which we completed. And then, uh, I put Pleasant Run claim, Commissioner, cause that was vital to get that done. Um, and then, of course, underway, Riverfront will be starting in the next month. Uh, so we're working right now steadily, uh, on, uh, working with all of our different stakeholders, meeting with all the different groups. Uh, Cypress Waters is under.
But, let me just say, but, but Pleasant Run, when you, when you say claim, that we, uh, we took, we gave them their, basically their TIF money.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to separate it for the record.
Okay, and then, uh, Rallett Road Trail is underway as well. That's our grant, uh, project, that's in District One. That's, uh, under construction right now. Next slide. And these are the City Plus projects, in which we're collaborating with the city side by side, working on different phases. And for design, and, uh, and that's underway right now. Of course, Daniel Dell is clearly underway. I'm sorry, yeah, Daniel Dell, uh, Ewing, and these are the ones that are, are pretty much underway from the City Plus side of the fence. Next slide. Okay, uh, construction completed, City Plus, Coombs Creek, uh, did get completed this year. Um, and then, this is a Miller Road, uh, portion, it's not the bridge, this is the piece that Rallett just completed. And then we have Phase One of the Right Rock, Right Rock, Right Rock Trail, thank you.
Fast, few times.
Yes, thank you. And then, of course, uh, construction is starting, uh, and underway, Lover's Lane, uh, and also, uh, the piece in Dallas, we're getting ready to start a little bit of portion of that piece with the city. And of course.
Sorry, Southern White Rock Trail, that's north of the lake, though. Is it, is that what you're talking about?
No, this is south of the lake. This is the portion that goes.
This is gonna be new, not fixing up the old one, then?
No, this is a section that they just completed, and then we're, then there's an extension of it that the city is working on bidding right now.
Gotcha, okay.
I think there was improvements on the trail.
Yeah.
The trail was there, you're right.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I know what you're talking about now.
Okay, so, um, and then the, the rest of these, of course, are underway and moving forth right now, in the sense with this. The cities, most of these are being led by the cities for construction. Okay, city-led, these are, uh, cities are a hundred percent leading these. We are part of the meetings and reviewing plans and doing the necessary work that's needed for these particular projects. Um, so to highlight these projects, um, Davis Street, uh, you know, uh, uh, Dr. Garcia, you've been involved there, and we've, and they're moving forth to try to get those public meetings going and so forth. We have Ross, uh, which is important for the city to get that one to construction this year, but that was, uh, really underway, uh, in the sense of design. Uh, these are some other projects. Valley View is now moving forward to, towards construction, but that was something that the city was working heavily on, City of Irving. Um, construction completions here, uh, we have, uh, Duck Creek, Denton Tap, and West Mockingbird Lane. Next slide. And then, pro- here are projects that are underway with the cities.
Before you go into the, uh, backup, uh, number, on, 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 uh, Clyde Warren.
This is the extension, and this is that one point three million.
Right.
We haven't encumbered it, we're just waiting for them to finish up, and so then they'll bid it, and then we'll encumber those funds. But I wanted to mention it because those funds will be needed.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, next slide. Okay, so here, like I mentioned, here's the projects where the cities are leading the way. Uh, and, uh, Campion, uh, Dr. Garcia, of course, on this one. They've done the Phase One, but this is the extension piece that they're moving out on right now, and that's what they're doing right now.
And we haven't heard from them, right?
Yeah, it's been a while, but they, they are, they are touching base with us now, so that's what I'm saying, they are moving forward into construction on this. And we were meeting with them on, on Phase Two design, but this, this is the piece that they're moving out on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we can go to the next.
I like your juggling. Let's, let's attend to the whole county so that all of us are happy.
So, looking at things that have been encumbered, and how it's been working in the sense of their, our encumbrances. We had, uh, proposed sixty-four point five, uh, for FY twenty-five. Uh, of course, uh, working with the Budget Department, uh, we, uh, deferred ten point six to twenty twenty-six, and, which was, uh, basically, we had fifty-three point nine remaining to work with, uh, for FY twenty-five. Out of that, here's thirty-two point nine as of right now. Now, we do have some projects that were disencumbered that we gotta bring back. So that's why we're trying to get that done right now, working with, uh, Budget and with, um, with purchasing and others to get all of that reinstated. So we will probably still be needing that twenty-one by the end of September.
How did they get unencumbered? Were there delays in the projects, or what happened?
Well, what happened was, these were some projects that were before Fusion. These were before twenty twenty-three, they were encumbered.
Okay.
The cities, as you well know, some of our agreements we put in, we weren't gonna pay them until the end of construction. Well, guess what? Interconstruction is now, so they need their funds now. So we are now going in and getting those reinstated, so we can get those payments for those cities.
So that's just the project, because it's a long-term process over a series of years.
Yes.
Is that kind of what's going on there?
Back before Fusion, we would just go ahead and encumber it. You know, we do the agreement, we encumber it. But what happened was, when Fusion came along in twenty twenty-three, a lot of those were disencumbered. So as we get ready to pay those cities, we go in and we see, wait a minute, those were disencumbered funds, so we gotta go ahead and get them reinstated, so we can go ahead and pay those cities for that work.
So just for clarification, that was part of the crossover with the new financials, and so that was part of the cleanup.
Yeah.
Of the system.
Right.
Okay, next slide. So again, key results are staying the same. Uh, we, one thing, uh, to make a, uh, clear understanding about, uh, uh, the relationships of our projects, in order for us to do a project with a city, it typically takes five years. That's traditionally, five years to get a project out. So that's why we're continuing the direction here on getting these projects. Most of these are seven calls, so therefore, things are beginning to happen right now. So go forward. And a lot of construction is hitting now. That's what's happening. We've got a lot of construction that's on the table, even on county-led type projects. Next slide. So here's an overview of twenty twenty-six. Uh, and if you see that what's in orange, that's what's, uh, starting construction or in construction. So you kind of see an overview of what's moving forth in construction. We had a lot of construction on the county-led with Riverfront and so forth last year, or, or twenty twenty-five, but in going to twenty twenty-six, there's not much, well, we do have the trail project, Chalk Hill is the one. We gotta get Chalk Hill bid by the, by December, um, and Central Trail as well. So the orange is what we're moving out, and the cities are hitting as well. So that's what, what we're projecting here. Go to the next slide. So if you see here, a summary here, we have sixty-one point six. If, if, if we didn't have the ten point six moving back in, it would've been fifty-one, but it's sixty-one point six. Uh, with that, we've been working closely with the cities. I wanna, I mean, we're telling cities, if you're not ready, we're pushing it out, uh, we're not going to hold on to that. You know, a good example is Westmoreland. We, we told the City of DeSoto, no, we're not doing it this year. Now they're ready. Matter of fact, I told them, we're meeting the day on it, cause they're getting ready to bid Westmoreland. So we're working heavily with the cities on getting those projects adjusted and specified on when they're gonna be bidding and when we need to encumber those funds.
Yeah, so what happens if the city says, we're ready to go now, and we've encumbered the money for next fiscal year?
Well, well, they, that's, that's what we're trying to do, is when are you encumbering, when are you bidding? We're talking to them right now about what's your schedule, and they're giving us forecast schedules as well. I'm asking Garland, for example, cause you had a lot of projects that Garland was hitting. So I asked them for quarterly updates on when, when they, what funds they need. So we can match them, match them up. So we're working close in hand with each city on getting that matchup tied down on when they need their funds.
You know, I guess, we're concerned, and again, I haven't talked to Magic, but I understand they have a different kind of city manager slash engineer now, and I, they, they're moving. I guess, my concern is, I thought the city, Dallas, was also talking Westmoreland.
No, Dallas is Daniel Dell. They have Daniel Dell. Yeah, Daniel Dell, so they.
They're not gonna do.
Well, they, they, we do have funds programmed for design for Daniel Dell, for FY twenty twenty-six, with them. And as you recall, remember the whole corridor? We got Duncanville, DeSoto, DeSoto, Duncanville, and also Pleasant Run, all of the, in that corridor. So we're working with them on that full corridor, which includes Dallas, cause Dallas has Daniel Dell.
Okay.
Okay, here is the highlight, okay, go, go to the next one, I'm sorry, wait, I just mentioned that. Okay, so here is a, uh, another overview here for you to see. This is the, uh, RTR funds. Uh, what's key here is, of course, getting wildlife completed. So that's what's key, is to get wildlife completed, and then, of course, get going on Riverfront. Engineering-wise, what. Engineering-wise with RTR funds, and these are the dollars that are coming from COG here for regional, the regional transportation revenue funds. So, basically, from engineering side, we have Beltline and Sunrise. So, these are the inland port projects that are key to get those going. So, once we get our release from the federal side, we can start on the intersections at Sunrise and Beltline, and that's what we're trying to push out. Also Lawson, we have RTR funds. So, we're working close with Mesquite on trying to get that moving forward as well. And then, the federal side, as I mentioned, Chalk Hill, Central Trail, they're due to be bid by December. We have to bid those, and of course, we've got our ongoing projects. We do have, we hope to start on some of the right-of-way, or definitely start on the right-of-way for the hockey stick projects, that's Wintergreen and Jefferson and Pleasant Run. And then, of course, all of our inland port projects in getting the raised grant dollars moving. Definitely trying to close out Medical District. That's the goal for this year. And then, of course, we had, we did bring in $10 million for Phase Two, Dr. Garcia, to get Phase Two going for Chalk Hill. ARP, we, we have, actually, ARP, Cypress Waters Trail is the only one for construction that's due to be completed by the summer of 2026. And then, of course, all the other engineering projects are underway right now, and they should be all finished by the spring of 2026. So, that would conclude our ARP. Next slide. Okay, so, with that, we also did a summary slide, slide on the BRNSAP and emergency funds and our emergency repairs, because we want to make sure. And just to note, the biggest thing here is, we got to bid Simons Road. We, Tech Dot did give us an amended agreement, but that, we still have to have that done by October of 2026. So, we're getting ready to bid that this fall, so we can move forward to get Simons moving. Because that was the one we, we put off.
We took, we took, I thought that's why we moved the money from Malloy.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we did get with Tech Dot on that, and that's why we went ahead and revised the agreement.
Got it, okay.
So, this is a summary that we have, and we can go to the next slide real quick. So, basically, we're, we're looking at 3 million each year. One thing that we've noticed here with Tech Dot is, they used to send the BRNSAP reports, and that's that Bridge Inventory Inspection Appraisal Report. They used to send it every two years. Now, they're sending it quarterly. Matter of fact, we just got an update, just, just.
Why, I mean, I, I recognize that, according to Tech Dot, that we have more going on probably in this region than, than, than does Harris County. That's, that's just amazing to me. But why are they quarterly hitting us now?
The reason why they're doing it is because what would happen here is, when they were giving you it in two years, there's already things that are going on with those bridges. So, therefore, they want to try to expedite it, especially if you've got a active county like ours. And our unincorporated, and inland port is very active right now.
Right, no, no.
So, they're trying to, they're trying to expedite and give us information as quickly as possible.
Okay. Now, this is one of those things that kind of came up yesterday, and Mr. Martin, Dr. Barkin. Is, is the 10 million appropriate, given the bridge? I don't, I don't understand the, the calculation, we know about the dams, all that. But is 10 million sufficient? Because remember, we, we're gonna be talking about backing down, or, I shouldn't say back, recalculating from this BRNSAP emergency. So, I just want to make sure 10 million is sufficient.
So, it's not in all of one year? So, she said over a three-year period, so it's 26, 27, and 28? So, we're working with Ms. Blair and her totals that she's given us, right?
Yes, for 2026, we're looking at 3.4, for 28, 3.3, and for 20, I'm sorry, 27, 28, 3.3, 3.3.
And the 3.4 has been included, and you'll see that when I come around in the round robin to show you the updated calculations.
Okay.
Okay.
Just, just want to make sure, I don't want to get caught short, especially with this program. And I understand, you know, Dr. Garcia, and I've made that clear with the redistribution, but I want to make sure this program is, is taking care of it.
And making sure here, we're looking at things we can put our hands on, that we know, like from Tech Dot, from the dams, so forth and so forth.
I got it.
Any emergencies, I'm, I'm looking over my shoulder here, too, that's in the reserve. So, if it's an emergency, it's in the reserve, from my understanding.
And that goes to the discussion that we have just today about road and bridge and emergencies, and that fund being healthy. Because if we continue to pull out money of that fund, we never know where we can be.
Are you talking about Road and Bridge Five?
Talking about some of the conversations.
Yeah, what's in reserve is about 12 points.
It's 10.5. We're gonna continue with the policy and be consistent with the 10 and a half of the fund, the road and bridge funds.
Maintain that and that.
Yes.
As, as part of the emergency?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that was the discussion yesterday.
Over and above this?
And, yeah.
So, you'll see that when we come back around, and I'll share that with you.
And you are communicating with Ms. Foster Allen, right?
Yes, ma'am. We're working with administration, and HO Finance, and OBE. And so, we'll come back around, and we'll update in Public Works, definitely, and then the Silver DA. And so, we've all kind of had several meetings that kind of go through to make sure we include everything.
Okay.
Okay.
And for us, that's all we have, next slide. That's all we have.
Let, 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 let me say, and, and to Public Works and all, I know other districts don't have this problem. But I, I really appreciate, I was talking about facilities earlier, the nimbleness that you have to kind of respond in the, in, in some of my cities. I know you find this hard to believe, but I got cities that are basically trying to hijack roads. Decide they're gonna go out and just post the damn sign. They're just gonna post it, gonna reroute the truck traffic, gonna reroute it. And I was like, you gotta be kidding. Now, and then I'm saying this to Public Works, because they had to get their lawyers engaged and everything else. Of course, I was, you know, I, I had the propensity to just go out and take the damn signs down, but they told me I couldn't do this. So, anyway, I sent them a letter. And, but I just appreciate your legal staff, your engineers. I, I just appreciate the fact that y'all responded to that. The signs came down, they, they, they saw we were serious. But the fact is, with, and I keep talking about bandwidth. I, I don't think Dallas County realizes, and that's what we were just talking about, about this bridge program. I don't think Dallas County realizes where we are in terms of, of, of this growth spur, this construction, that's what the judge was kind of talking about earlier, and even bandwidth to deal with our projects. Because I'm gonna tell you, we gonna kind of pay some premium, because that, you know, man, add $2 million, eh, they, they may or may not want to deal with us. There are a lot of large projects going on. I am seeing in my district mines pits, they, you know, they don't like us to call them pits, but I'm, at mines, gravel pits that are being reopened because the dearth of, of resources that they need for concrete and everything in this area. And so, it's, it's just amazing. And the truck traffic, and I appreciate the sheriff and her Waits and Measures Unit, but I'm gonna tell you, they, they have gone, I mean, they've gone rogue, my cities are rerouting, they don't want truck traffic. You know, they build a couple of half-million-dollar, 300, I mean, 700-million-dollar homes, and they want to reroute the damn traffic. And I said, you can't do that, you, you, you're killing my roads. And so, we're having to monitor that, Sheriff's Waits and Measures Units running all over the place. And I just appreciate the, your, your lawyers and everybody just kind of getting on it and saying, hey, and generating those letters. So, I just want to say thank you, you know, and I'll take you for granted.
Can I just add a little bit onto that? Over the last month, I have been to NACO and to the Texas Association of County Judges and Commissioners. And Dallas County continues to have the reputation of being a county that works, that we work together. It doesn't mean that we're perfect, but what it does mean is that we keep pushing projects, road projects, clean air projects, working with our cities to make sure that Dallas County is doing what it's supposed to be doing. So, when I go to those kinds of meetings, I can hold my head up very well in being able to report what is going on. And it is that cooperation that makes a huge, huge difference compared to the, the Tampos and San Jose's and Cincinnati's around the country. We're just seen as a county that, that works. So, you know, thank you to Public Works and to, you know, looking around this room, the other people who are involved here, because it, it, it makes a difference. So, thank you.
Good to see you, mister. Good to see you, Mr. Camacho.
I, and I just wanted to, after that comment, I just wanted to add, Alberta, you always keep us informed. Your team is fantastic on, you know, keeping us appraised of where we're going, how the city conversations are going. God knows, you had some of the longest meetings that require the most people being on the same tune at the same time. And I appreciate that you and your team can do that, because bringing people together sometimes is the hardest part to do. Gracias.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. We'll be back tomorrow, 1:00 to 3:00, and we'll, Mr. Wilson will be going over update for insurance, and then recommendation for '26, and then HR workforce compensation. And then, Ms. Tran will be here to do her capital projects update. As soon as we get the presentation, we'll try to get them to you.
That would be appreciated, so we can see what's, we can look it over and see what's coming up.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Okay, okay.
Judge, he has to adjourn the meeting.
You want me to sign it again?
He doesn't have to adjourn. Judge has to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, the meeting, yeah, is, is hereby adjourned at 10:29.
All right.